So this is the July 21st, 2020 meeting of the Esau Meadow Planning Board. So I'm required by Mass General Law to see if there is anyone who is recording this meeting. And if so, would you please state your name? Okay, hearing none. So in attendance this evening to as of this time, we have Jonathan Torsha, a board member, board member, Todd Richards, board member, George Kingston, and myself, Russell Denver. We are expecting Mr. Pete Punderson to join as well. So our first order of approval of two sets of minutes. The first is the June 9th meeting and the June 30th meeting. I know that the June 9th meeting, George, you had some questions and you were going to work with Bethany. Were you able to to resolve that?
Yeah, I think we were.
Yep.
So do I have a motion to approve the June 9th, 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second back.
So a motion made and seconded to approve the June 9th, 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes. And because this is on video, we need to have a roll call for votes. So Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Russell Denver is a yes. So the June 30th Planning Board meeting minutes, everyone have an opportunity to review them. And if so, do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second back.
So we have a motion to accept the June 30th, 2020 Planning Board meeting minutes, which has been a second. So we will do a roll call. Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And Russell Denver is a yes. Mr. Clerk, first item, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case SP 2020-1 Amendment to Special Permit SP 2012-04 for Pride Convenience. Request by applicant to change the hours of operation at 13 North Main Street. Assessors parcel ID 20-37-0 and 27-38-0. A combined of 682 plus or minus square feet site located in the business zoning district. The applicant is Pride Convenience, Inc. The attorney is James Channing, 246 Cottage Street, Springfield, Mass.
So before we begin the hearing, I would just like to read the following. So I had requested from the town attorney to get kind of give a recap of the special permits and the proposed amendments. Because people might remember that this was acted on last year. So I would like to read the following into the record. On May 8th, 2012, the Esau Meadow Planning Board granted a special permit to Pride to operate a convenience store slash gas station at 13 North Main Street. The hours of operation were designated as 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. On December 6th, 2017, Pride filed an application for amendment of the special permit, seeking only to extend the hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Monday through Sunday. That application was ultimately denied by the planning board and is subject to ongoing litigation in the land court. The 2017 application is not a part of the current matter being remanded to the planning board. On January 24th, 2019, Pride filed another application for amendment of the special permit, seeking only to extend the hours of operation from 5:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. to 11:30 p.m. Monday through Sunday. On March 5th, 2019, after public hearings on the proposed amendment, the Planning Board denied Pride's application. Pride appealed that denial in the Hampden County Superior Court on or about March 22nd, 2019. In an effort to resolve the ongoing litigation between Esau Meadow and Pride, the parties agreed to a remand of the 2019 application to the Planning Board. This step allows Pride to return to the Planning Board and again seek an amendment of the special permit with respect to the hours of operation based on its 2019 application and any additional information or documentation that Pride submits to supplement or after the original 2019 application. If Pride is satisfied with the resulting decision from the remand hearing, the matter will be resolved. In the event Pride is not satisfied with the action taken by the Planning Board on its 2019 application, it has the option of reviving the Superior Court litigation and proceeding to trial on the underlying complaint. So with that being said, I'd like to ask the petitioner, who I see, Mr. Channing, I believe is representing the petitioner. So I would ask Mr. Channing if he would like to present information regarding the application. We cannot hear you, Mr. Channing.
He's on mute, I think.
You appear to be on mute, Mr. Channing. Okay.
Mr. Punderson coming? Is there another member coming? Are we proceeding with four members tonight?
It appears we're here with four. We were expecting Mr. Punderson.
All right, thank you.
If you would like to delay it, we certainly will consider that. But we did expect Mr. Punderson.
Perhaps if we could just temporarily delay it for tonight, not continue it, but delay it. If you want to take other matters out of order, see if Mr. Punderson does come in the next. That's depending on what's convenient for the Planning Board. Would prefer that.
Do any of the Planning Board members have any concerns with that request?
Not at all. I'll make a motion, take the next item out of order.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
So a motion made and seconded to take the next item out of order. We have to do a roll call. Mr. Torsha?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself is a yes. Thank you, Mr. Channing. We'll be back, hopefully. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, case SP 2000, I mean, 2020-2 Massage Therapist Facility. Request by applicant for a special permit for a massage therapist facility at 51 Prospect Street. Assessors parcel ID 27-154A-23 plus or minus square foot space in existing structure located in the business zoning district. The applicant is People's Massage and Skincare, 51 Prospect Street, Esau Meadow, Massachusetts.
Do we have the petitioner?
Can you see me?
No.
Hold on. Can you see me?
We can.
Hi. Sorry.
Not a problem. So this is a special permit, so it does require a public hearing. But as petitioner, we'd like you to kind of present. Obviously, tell us a little bit something about yourself, about the business, the location, so forth and so on.
Okay, so I was at, I've been in, I've been in business in Esau Meadow for 14 years now as a massage therapist. I used to be at 145 Shaker Road and I had the special permit, I had this special permit already. I'm just, we moved to a new location, a smaller location because of COVID. We had to shut down and kind of pause our business for a little bit. And we found, you know, 51 Prospect Street and we would like to reopen at People's or reopen People's Massage and Skincare there.
Okay. Before I open it to the public for any questions or concerns, do any members of the Planning Board have any questions or concerns they'd like to address? Hearing none. I'd like to open this to the public. So if there's anyone who would like to be heard, you need to raise your hand and we will be able to pull you into the meeting. Any, anyone?
I'm not seeing anybody right now.
Okay. So not seeing anyone. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing component?
So moved, George.
And do we have a second for that, to close the hearing? So we have a motion to close the public hearing. It's been seconded. So all in favor by roll call. Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So on the issuance of the special permit, do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to issue the special permit?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So motions are made, a second to issue the special permit for the property at 51 Prospect Street. Any discussion? Hearing none. By roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, case SP 20-3 Massage Therapist Facility. Request by applicant for a special permit for a massage therapist facility at 124 Shaker Road. Assessors parcel ID 28A-3-69 in a .47 plus or minus square foot space in existing structure located in the business zoning district. The applicant is Stacy Duquette, 8 Ripley Street, Wilbraham, Mass.
Is there a hair?
Yes, I am.
We can hear you, we can't see you yet.
Uh, hold on a second. Um. Every device has a different place where the camera and the mic are. Sorry. Let me just give you one moment here.
Sure.
I've been in that movie before.
Yeah. All right, there it is. Okay.
Oh, everyone's doing the meeting from the car tonight.
Yeah. He's a second car person.
Maybe I ought to be in the. That's where the air conditioning certainly is.
I'm at my son's baseball game.
Oh, good.
As long as he's winning.
Yeah. All right, so we would like to hear about you as the applicant, your experience, so forth. We'd like to hear about the parcel of, you know, the property in which you're wishing to go into, what your hours of operation might be, that type of thing. And then we will open it to the public and see if there's any comments regarding the request.
Okay. I have held a business license in Esau Meadow for the past two years. I am a single self-employed massage therapist with a private practice. I'm not employing any other therapist that has been established for about 15 years. I'm seeking to move my location because I was offered a spot in a beautiful, brand-new wellness facility at 124 Shaker Road. It has a registered dietitian, licensed mental health care professional, and nurse practitioner practicing functional medicine. So they're also offering services like sauna and biomat, things that I have not been able to have. So I'm just seeking to move my practice from the subleased office I had into this brand-new space.
And where was the practice before?
At Wellness Within at 200 North Main Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Before I open it to the public, see if there's any comments on this request. Does the board have any questions or concerns they'd like to address?
This is that new medical building that went in on Shaker Road, right? Really recent construction, mentalist building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other members? Hearing none, so I'd like to open the, to see if there is anyone who has any comments or concerns that'd like to address to the board. Bethany, are you seeing anyone?
Uh, nope.
Okay. So not hearing of anyone or seeing of anyone. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second to close?
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, so by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I am a, the public hearing party is closed. So do I have a motion to to grant the special permit?
So moved, George.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Motion made and seconded to grant the special permit by roll call. Mr. Torsha?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And Russell Denver, I am a yes. So congratulations, best wishes, and glad to have you in that new property.
Thank you. Okay, have a good night.
Next item, next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, case site 2020-4 Excel dryer, dryer modification. Request by applicant for modification to site plan review for three small additions to the existing structure for Excel dryer located at 357 Chestnut Street. Assessors parcel ID 18-2A, a 7.29 plus or minus acre site in the industrial garden park zoning district. The applicant is DNG Enterprises LLC, 357 Chestnut Street, Esau Meadow, Mass.
Do we have the petitioner here?
Yep, he's still writing.
Thank you. Bethany, I think you're going to steal Ryan's job.
Yes, we'll see.
He's been sending his resume out.
Yeah.
Good evening.
So we can, we see your names, we don't see your faces, and we can't hear you.
Other than that.
All right, here I am.
We see Keith. Hello? And Marcia, we don't see your face or we don't hear you.
Is this any better?
No. We, we.
Yes, my homework.
So we.
My name is John Pelley. I have been retained by DNG Enterprises to help in the presentation of the application and manage the construction. I live at 32 Laro Road in Westfield, Massachusetts. And I work for Pearson Systems in West Springfield.
Okay.
So I would like to just give you an overview of.
Well, we cannot hear you. Mr. Terry, are you able to step in?
Yes, please. So the Excel dryer company is looking to expand their warehouse space. They're going to expand the, in the direction, the south direction and in the east direction, as well as they want to expand their, their break room. This, as I'm understanding, this increase in the building size does not actually increase the amount of employees to the project, property. This is just so that they can have additional storage of materials to do their process. Previously, your planning board approved a parking lot extension to the south towards the Chestnut Street. And all of that parking that was constructed previously still meets the parking requirements of the property. The stormwater management has been analyzed by our office. And we found that the northeast basin needed to get enlarged a small, small percentage in order to accommodate the additional impervious roof area of that northeast addition. The other two additions are actually taking the place of existing pavement. So the impervious area was not much of a, there was really no change of impervious area over there in that section. I believe that pretty much covers the, the project other than the building additions themselves. The south, south warehouse addition is going to maintain, is going to replicate these existing height of 30 feet. And the northeast addition. I'm sorry, I can't tell what the northeast addition's elevation is going to be. I think it's going to be 18 feet, matching the existing building in that section as well. The, the addition for the break area is going to match the break area roof line and the look of the building as well. I think I'll, I think that's the summary.
Before I open this to the public, does any member of the planning board have any questions for the petitioner?
What is the square footage? I'm sorry, go ahead. What's the square footage of each addition?
Well, the square footage of each individual addition, the south addition is 2,160 square feet, 63, 2,163. The northeast addition is 1,950 square feet. The addition to the break area is 695 square feet.
So you're adding a little over 5,000 square feet to the building?
Probably.
Will this be primarily away from street view?
So this building is set back behind a second building on, on Chestnut Street. The break room and the south warehouse is towards the street. But the, let's see about getting a distance back. So the building, the front yard setback is 99 feet.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? If I open to the public? So I'll open the public hearing with respect to this matter. One that wishes to be heard, please raise your hand on it. So you can be pulled into the meeting. Bethany, do you see anyone?
Uh, no.
Okay. Yes, we have no one wishing to speak on this matter. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing and by roll call, Mr. Torsha?
Yeah.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And myself, Russell Denver is a yes. So on the main matter of granting the modification plan review, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion made and seconded to approve the modification to the site plan. Any discussion? Hearing none. A vote. So Mr. Torsha?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And Russell Denver here is a yes. So you're approved, modification is approved. So thank you to your continued investment in Esau Meadow. Appreciate it very much.
Very good. Thank you so much for your help.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, case SD-SD 2020-2. Modification of definitive subdivision plan for Jeffrey Lane Extension. Request for approval of modification for definitive subdivision plan for relocation of the proposed infiltration system from Lot 3 to Lot 2 in a three-lot subdivision on 3.5 plus or minus acre site located at Jeffrey Lane. Assessors parcel ID 40-12 plus 13, 32 plus 33 in a residential A zoning district. The applicant is Jeffrey Bosworth, Southern New England Real Estate Development, Inc., 45 Noelwood Drive, Esau Meadow, Mass.
So I would like to call upon Bethany, who is our planning and community development director. Bethany, do you want, you want to note anything before we begin the hearing on this?
The only thing we had was Tom Christensen from DPW. And I had asked Mr. Bosworth to submit a fully modified plans that to avoid future confusion down the road. He's only submitted one and it's up to you, you as a planning board, to decide if that's a sufficient record for communication.
Okay. So is the petition, so we'd like to acknowledge Mr. Punderson, who is joining us at this time.
Sorry, I was working on my son's house. I was a little late.
Thank you. Is the petitioner available? Mr., you're out there, we see your name, but we can't see you and we can't hear you. Mr. Bosworth, if you are there, we cannot see you and we cannot hear you. So Bethany, would you happen to have Mr. Bosworth's phone number by chance?
Yep, I'll give him a call.
Yep. We can just take a quick break while she tries to reach out to him.
That's a quiet group.
I think we're trying to wait to hear back from Bethany.
Right, right.
Yeah. What's that called, waiting with bated breath?
I believe so. The joys of Zoom.
Yeah. There are times I hear myself with a phrase and I go, oh my God, how old am I?
Younger than me.
Bethany, are you there?
Yep, I'm on the phone with him. He can see and hear us, but he can't get his microphone to work. So he's going to exit out and try again.
Okay, thank you. Well, Mr. Bosworth, your, your name pops up. There's a, your microphone is still muted, although it says now it's connecting. So Bethany?
Yep.
Well, let's give him one more. Says he's trying to connect, let's say, be connected.
Jeff, we can't hear you through Zoom, but I can hear you with the phone. Do you want to try calling in on the phone number?
So what, what I'm, oh, there he is. Hello. No, we can't, we can see you, we can't hear you. We cannot hear you.
His, his microphone's muted.
Bethany, are you on the phone with him by chance?
Yeah. I think he's gonna try to call in on the number, phone number.
All I had to do was unmute his mic.
Lower left corner of your screen, there should be a microphone symbol with a red line through it. If you click on that, we'll hear you.
There you go.
Okay.
Turn up the volume.
Not sure if he has a microphone connected.
Well, what I might suggest, Bethany, if you could with him, why don't we see if we can bring back Pride and maybe between during the hearing with Pride, you might be able to work with him?
Sure.
If you, if you possibly could. So I think what I'd like to try to do, leave though, Bethany, is if we can bring Mr. Channing back into the meeting?
Sure.
Thank you.
How are you?
I'm well. So you can see Mr. Punderson has joined us, so we have a, we have a full board. So just to bring Pete up to date, so we opened the item, I read the, I read this quick memorandum from the, on the kind of the history of the matter and why, planning board, which I think had been forwarded to by Bethany. So, and then Mr. Channing inquired on whether we would have four members or five, and fortunately you have joined us. So we have five members. Mr. Channing, as the representative petitioner, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Again, appreciate your time, certainly novel era to look at the request. For background, we're talking about 13 North Main Street, the mobile station at the intersection of Elm Street and North Main Street, right on the Rotary. The current authorized hours of operation are 5:00 AM until 10:00 PM, seven days a week. In evaluating whether or not there could be an appropriate request for an extension of hours, we certainly looked at a lot of information. We hear respectfully requesting an extension of hours from 5:00 AM until 11:30 PM, seven days a week. As way of just supplemental information or background, I think, back when Pride took over the mobile, again, it's been operating since at least the 1940s as a gas station there. When Pride took over, we asked for the 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, those were the hours that were there from the prior applicant or the prior owner of the station. Subsequent to that, again, in 2012, we did do a little bit of a remodel, which was before the board. You approved it at that point in time. And then we've been operating for now eight years under, under those hours. Obviously, some things have changed in town, specifically, I think most people know, there's a new gas station, the Shell station, as well as, I think, people's lifestyles and hours of need and want. Looking at that, we feel that 11:30 may be an appropriate extension of hours. Obviously, at some point, someone may think more hours would be appropriate and other people respectfully would think that the 10 o'clock hour is fine as well. And so we are here asking for 11:30 for a couple of reasons. One being that we looked at the traffic numbers. We had traffic numbers done on a Friday and a Saturday by innovative data out of Elche Town. And this is April of last year, so it wasn't during the pandemic or it wasn't during any skewed hours, actually the weekend, I believe, before Easter. So there wasn't any hit or miss or ebb and flow based on school vacations or Easter. But looking at that, you really do notice that the traffic in both Elm Street and North Main Street drops off beginning at around 11:30 PM. And then it goes certainly after midnight or around midnight, it certainly drops off even more substantially. But there is certainly a pickup or a steadiness from the 10:30 to the 11 o'clock, in fact, 11:15 hour as well. And if you're familiar a little bit with gas stations, gas stations primarily are what's known as pass-by traffic. It's not a destination, but rather vehicles that are on the road will go out there, whether it be to get a gallon of milk or to play their lottery or fill up as well. Sometimes lunch, sometimes snacks, do it typically while they're out already or either before work or after work. And that's with respect to the traffic aspect of asking for the 11:30. But we also evaluate the site as a whole as well, in accompanying with the 21 North Main Street site, the older Ramitos, which Pride owns. I think people are familiar with that. And in taking account what some neighbors and some individuals have said, whether it be during our, our community reach out at the library or during past public hearings, there were some concerns about noise, specifically the dumpster at that site and as well as lighting. And I can tell you that if you've gone by it, you can see that the tall light poles are actually removed from 21 North Main Street. There's no longer those light, those really tall light poles there, as well as the dumpster has not been, to my knowledge, and again, I verify with USA Hauling on a semi-regular basis, has not been before 7 o'clock. That was a suggested time to me from individuals, they've asked that it not be before 7. I know there's conditions, another special permits, but I've gone back. In fact, I talked just this week to David Castanero about it. And in the past three months, the most recent time it was picked up was at 7:45 in the morning on May 5. And so, and the latest was 10:23 AM on June 16. In evaluating, also, there is a beer and wine permit located at that site. By law, you would be able to sell it until 11:00 PM, but obviously the planning board could trump that and they do in this case where the, the 10:00 PM hour also limits or puts a ceiling as to when the beer and wine. Looking at all the other, under the Liquor Control Act, all the other, the other off-premises license in town are, given the fact, unable to operate until 11:00 PM. I see the one, I believe it's the olive shop or tray olive, they do primarily, I believe, gift baskets or olive oil as well as wine. They don't have until 11:00 PM, but I don't believe they requested it. I submitted additional information, a petition that shows some people are in fact in support of extending the hours, as well as, again, taking into account what individuals have asked for, and I think Pride has been responsive. Can't say that Pride has been 100% compliant. If obviously an individual is able to buy a candy bar at 10:05 PM, then that was not appropriate. And looking back, I personally looked at the video and that's exactly what happened, that the cashier was emptying a trash can at 10:05, an individual walked in and he sold something that was not appropriate. It was addressed the next day. I think that's one thing that I can say about Pride is that we're very responsive. We like to be a responsible business. And if any issue ever comes up, whether it be a complaint, a concern from anyone, and our three businesses that we operate here, or three locations that we own, is that we will respond to people. We're easily found, we can be talked to. And in fact, the planning board itself, if you were to allow this extension of hours till 11:30, obviously you would still retain the right at any, to revisit this if there were complaints or concerns, or you felt, in fact, an extension of hours that we are requesting was not appropriate. And so just looking at the whole picture in terms of what we feel might be appropriate, we respectfully would request for a 5:00 AM to 11:30 PM hours of operation for seven days a week.
Before I open it to the public for their comments, if there are any, do any members of the planning board have any questions for Mr. Channing?
I do.
Okay.
What, what are the hours of operation of Pride at the north end of North Main Street?
It's 24 hours of operation. Currently under, under the pandemic, they're not operating 24, but there were no, there's no condition of hours of operation on that special permit.
Okay. And what are the hours at that Shell station on the south end of town? You know what those are?
Those are, those are allowed to be 5:00 AM to 1:00 AM by special permit.
Okay. And are you selling beer and/or wine at the current location right now?
13 North Main Street, yes, there is, it's limited till 10:00 PM, but there is an active off-premises license at that location.
So you sell, you sell beer and wine in that store?
That's correct.
I didn't know that.
I'd just like to just add one thing, just to, so Pete asked about the gas station convenience store at the corner of Shaker and Chestnut. So just to give the board a little reminder, so they came back in to amend a special permit, similar to what Pride is doing, seeking an amendment. And when they were initially received a special permit, they were given 24-hour service. A different planning board, and why I say a different planning board, to me, the planning board that we have sitting here right now is different from the planning board of last year because we have a different member. And so each planning board is different. So to say that the planning board is just a planning board of the town of Easton Meadow, to me, is, is not correct because there are different people. And I just want to remind people that there are no longer any elected members of the planning board. So I want to put that out there. But during the amendment to the Shaker and Chestnut, the hours of operation were reduced. So they were reduced from 24 hours to 5:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There were several motions made or discussions about even further reducing those hours. So conceivably, we could do something with the hours either with respect to this request. So if there are other questions of the petitioner before I open it to the public, are there any from any board members?
I still have one more question.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Channing, if, if we didn't permit, permit your request, grant your request for the additional hours, can you supersede that because the state beverage law or alcohol law says that you can sell alcohol till 11 o'clock?
No, you're, you're planning board, you have the authority to control. It's interesting, if it's an on-premises, you have, it's what's arguably interpreted by the ABCC as, as right to have certain hours and you can extend them. But your planning board, if you say 10:00 PM, we obviously have to comply with that law. It's 10:00 PM. Even if the city council gave us a license that said we could do it until 11:00 PM, your law or your special permit condition says 10:00 PM, that's, we'd have to comply with that.
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
So if there's no other questions, I'd like to open it to the public. Before we do that, George?
I'm sorry.
All right, Jonathan, go ahead.
Are there any time cards you would be able to provide us with? I know that they close at 10:00, I know that there's been some discrepancy in the past, but I was just curious of whether that would be something the board would be able to take with that. I'm not sure if you were able to hear me.
No, could you repeat it, please?
Would there be any time cards that you would be able to provide the board with in regards to the closing already at 10:00, but there's been some reports in the past, some testimony in the past that had said that there's been service after that 10:00 PM closing time?
So we didn't catch the first half of the question, so I'm gonna ask you to repeat it one more time, if you could.
Did you get closer to the mic, Jen?
I think, I think, well, Mr. Torsia's asking for us whether or not time cards to show, to establish that we're complying with the hours of operation. And obviously, registered receipt could establish it. I could tell you that it's from 6:00 AM until 10:00 PM. The registered data would show that. In fact, we're not currently operating the first hour, 5:00 AM to 6:00 AM. I know back when it was addressed, I think it was February 2019, it was immediately that next day, the issue was ensured that it did not happen again, the cashiers were spoken to. All individuals were addressed that. Planning board says 10:00 PM, they mean 10:00 PM. They don't mean 10:01, they don't mean 10:02. As well as you want to give a good customer service, we have to comply with the bylaws of the town and the wishes and conditions of the planning board.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, my understanding is that we can control the hours of operation of the store, but the hours of sale of alcoholic beverages is the purview of the town council, which is the licensing authority. We really don't have the authority to say when you can sell alcoholic beverages versus not sell them as long as you're open. All we can do is work on the, the hours of opening of the establishment.
Okay. Thank you, George. So I'd like to open the hearing to the public, so if you would like to be heard on this matter, would you please raise your hand and you can be pulled into the meeting? Bethany or Ryan, do we have people you need to pull into the meeting? Brian or Bethany?
Sid is sitting out there as a call-in listener. Sid Starks.
Okay.
And there are several other people who are listening, whether or not they want to come in, I can't tell. Sid, Sid Starks has his hand up. Can we see Sid?
But we, can I hear Sid?
You're muted, Sid. We just lost him.
You're a gallery gal.
Let me see if he comes back.
We've had very good luck so far through our meetings until tonight. So Mr. Sid, you're muted. Now you're unmuted. We can hear you. We cannot see you.
Well, that's not a bad thing.
That's probably a good thing, Russ.
Okay.
Hold on, let's see. Start video.
Now we can see you.
He's at Disney.
My hand is up.
All right. Would you like to speak to this issue?
Yes, sir. Mr. Denver, I would, if I may.
Sure.
Dear members of the planning board, well, here we are. Yet again, fighting for our rights as residents of East Long Meadow to have our bylaws upheld. These bylaws were written with thought and process. The purpose, to balance the rights of the businesses and to maintain the quality of life for residents who abut the businesses. We, the residents, commend you, the planning board. You have been unwavering in your support and enforcement of the bylaws. You have been fair to businesses and to the residents. You have held the line on those who wanted to create new precedents, which harmed the quality of life for hard-working families in our community. You know, nothing has changed since the last time Pride demanded that you extend the operating hours. They were caught violating town law. And whether it was 10:05 or 10:55, they were still violating the law. And as Mr. Torsia said, I am sure the employees' time cards will reflect that, and they didn't volunteer to do that by themselves. And when they were caught violating it, it was not just once, but it was for months, and they never issued an apology. So is a lack of respect for East Long Meadow to be rewarded? We respectfully ask that you again, hold the line on the slow walk by Bob Baldock and Pride to increase their hours and infringe upon the residents' rights while thumbing their noses up to law-abiding business owners. What's next? There is no benefit to our town nor the neighborhood. We are sure the Pride's high-priced attorney will try to deny this truth. Other towns, along with East Long Meadow, have experienced Mr. Baldock's repeated bullying tactics. And I'm sure you know, by suing to get what he wants as a mean to force towns to financially cave to his demands. Do you disagree that this is actually some form of extortion? Please stay strong and do not fall for the antics and continue to stand for our bylaws, our residents, and our business owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Are there anyone else out in Zoom land that would like to be heard?
I'm not seeing anybody else.
Okay. Not hearing anyone else. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No moves.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
So a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. So on the motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Yes.
Mr. Torsia? Mr. Torsia? And myself, Russell Denver, is a yes. So now we're back to the the request to change, to amend the special permit to allow hours of operation to go until 11:30 p.m. What's the board's pleasure?
We are not allowed to make further discussion at this point, are we?
We could discuss. Yep, go ahead. If you have something you'd like to add?
Well, the reason.
Hold on, hold on, Pete. Go ahead.
Definitely we'd make a motion and then discuss.
Okay. Yep. So someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the hours, the revised hours to 11:30.
Do we have a second? So a motion made and there's been no second. Do we have another motion?
I'll second that.
You will second it. Okay. So we have a motion to expand the hours as requested to 11:30 p.m. Motion been made and seconded. So discussion. Mr. Punderson?
Reason why I ask my questions, thank you, George, for getting to the right place, by the way, is because you've got a gas station already open late at one end of town, and you've got another Pride open late at the other end of town. To expand the hours in the center of town doesn't seem to make any sense to me. And along with the possibility of it having an unfavorable effect on the budding neighbors, I personally don't see the need for the expansion of the hours.
Any other members with comments?
It seemed like this has been, for that neighborhood, it seems like this has been a pretty hot topic. And every time we've had a public hearing about this, it's always been exactly the same that the neighbors really want to keep the hours at 10:00. What keeps changing that makes the applicant want to keep coming back again and again and again, other than the fact that there's a lawsuit looming over the town regarding this issue? I mean, you know, I mean, you know, probably because of the Zoom meeting, perhaps others didn't show up. I can't speak for anybody else. But I just know that the history has always been that the neighbors are opposed to the hours being expanded for noise, for light, for all kinds of having more people in the neighborhood than they want at that time of night and things like that. So I guess I don't know what's changing other than the fact that there's a lawsuit hanging over the town's head regarding this matter.
Additionally, businesses are closing down earlier because of the lack of traffic. So there's even less traffic in the center of town. Go to go to the center of town, 11 o'clock. It's a ghost town at this point.
But that's not up to us to decide, even though you're right. At the end of the day, you know, the neighbors have been concerned about these hours. They've spoken in numerous public hearings about it, and nothing has changed since then, other than the applicant, you know, would like to, you know, you know, file an application to try again. I would note also that the petition that was submitted contained from Springfield and other areas of town, but there were no signatures from anyone on Elm Street down in that area or on Maple Street down in that area where people are affected most.
Any other comments from the board? So I'd like to make. Go ahead, John. Yep. Go ahead.
Just about the Atlanta thing, you know, I wasn't on the board at that time, but I do feel very uncomfortable of the idea of how, just the idea of a lot of these stores open late. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, but there are almost no places open at this proposed time currently in the center of town. Unlike Atlantis, there isn't a lot of density around it. There are some houses, but it's quite a distance away from it. There's a lot more houses that are closed in this location. It's nothing against Pride personally. It is just the idea of, I feel very uncomfortable just about anything past this time period, especially considering, yes, the circumstances that are right now. There is, I think, a little bit less traffic. Maybe a year ago or even six months ago, the times were different. But now it seems that less people are up at that hour because of the nature of society currently and the current situations that are going on.
Any other comments from the board before I before I provide some comments? Okay, so I will provide some comments. I think the first thing I want to start with is so 17 years ago, my wife moved to East Long Meadow. We went, we moved from Springfield. We thoroughly enjoyed our 20-plus years in being married in Springfield. We lived in a nice neighborhood in Hungry Hill. And in a city, you expect things to stay open later. You expect more hubbub, more activity, because Springfield is about 153,000 people. So you have that expectation. And after 20 years, we said we wanted something different. And we wanted to go to a town environment. And in a town, the pace of things is considerably slower. And that is one thing that drew us to East Long Meadow. The old saying about no drive, you know, no drive-through for food establishments, no big-box retailers. Those type of things were attractive to us. And so having stores closing at 10:00 p.m. was somewhat refreshing after the 20-plus years that we were married, living in Springfield. And I think that there's a certain character that goes to the character of the town of East Long Meadow, that it's going to be a little sleepier. It's going to be a little slower than a city environment. And I don't find that to be unappealing at all. I find that to be very appealing, a slower nature of things. And so some people say Google's a good thing, and sometimes Google's not such a bad thing. So I went on Pride's website, and I think I did this several years ago as well. So I chose communities that have less than 21,000 population that Pride has stores at. And of all the communities in which Pride has stores of under 21,000 population, and only one, Belcher Town, has hours beyond 10:00 p.m. They have a 24-hour operation. The is less than 21,000 that don't have expanded hours after 10:00 a.m. Include East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Palmer, Southwick, Windsor Locks, and East Hampton. In fact, there's a 10:00 a.m. closing on Page Boulevard in Springfield, which is surrounded by a neighborhood. There are communities above 21,000 that actually have Pride stores that close at 10:00 a.m.
P.m. P.m.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me. Thank you, P.m. Including West Springfield and Simmsbury, Connecticut. With respect to the sale of the liquor. So I went on Google and checked that out as well. So Lighthouse Liquors, just out of the road, has a 9:00 p.m. closing, according to their website. The City Line, which is very close to Pride and the northern part of the town, is 11:00 p.m. The Tudor House is 10:00 p.m. And the Beer Shop is 9:00 p.m. We often hear of a convenience store. So I'm aware of two stores that have hours of operation in town that are beyond 10:00 p.m. One of them is the Pride Store on the northern part of North, on North Main Street, the northern part of town. The other one is the convenience store that we've talked about. It's Shaker and Chestnut. I also want your initial petition or application, when you wanted to go to 11:30, this is for Pride, talked about competition. So let's talk about competition again. So for the convenience store, you said the normal hours of the Pride Store in the northern part of North Main Street, closer to Springfield, is 24 hours. There's not another store in town with 24 hours. The next has 19 hours. There are five, quote, "gas stations" in town. Three are owned by Pride. One has 24 hours. And that 24 hours of operation is a Pride store. So I don't understand the competition. We also have spoken about a safety issue. The safety issue about the entrances around the rotary. I specifically referenced the entrance just off the rotary on North Main Street, in which there is a crosswalk. Mr. Channing and I can debate on what Mr. Baldock said, but he did acknowledge that there's a safety issue there, and it has not been addressed since that time. The request of adding seven additional hours equates to either 4% to 5% additional traffic to that location to a safety concern that has not been addressed yet. I have concerns about that as well. So for those specific reasons about, I believe that banning the hours would change the character of the town. I don't believe there's precedent for that in an immediate area. And I think Mr. Torsia or Mr. Punderson also referenced the immediate business neighborhood for stores in the rotary. There is not one open past 10:00 p.m. There is a restaurant slash bar, which is Bentley's. And let's concede, that's not a store. And Center Square Grill is open beyond 10:00 p.m. And you'll need to concede that that is not a store or a convenience store. So not only do the residential residents have concerns with that, but it doesn't fit into the character of the business neighborhood as well. So I put those comments out there. And if there's any other discussion from the board members? Hearing none. So we have a motion.
Quick note, I think those two restaurants may have actually scaled back their hours because I know that Center Square, I believe, one evening that I went, closed at, I believe, 10:00 a.m. So I'm not sure about Bentley's. I know they have been closed for some time because of the stuff that's been happening. So even then, you may not have even any store or restaurant past that 10:00 p.m. closing.
All right. So we have a motion to approve the expansion of the hours, and it has been seconded. So please correct my wording if it's not correct, but a yes vote would approve the expansion of the hours as requested, the amended special permit. A no vote would not expand the hours of operation as amended. So by roll call, Mr. Richards?
No.
Mr. Kingston?
No.
Mr. Punderson?
No.
Mr. Torsia?
No.
Mr. Denver? No. This item fails. Mr. Clerk, the next item of business, please.
Case S D dash E 20 modification for definite sub plan. Well, this is Jeffrey Lane subdivision for Jeffrey Lane Extension. Request for approval of modification for definite subdivision plan for the relocation of a proposed infiltration system for Lot 3 to Lot 2 in a three-lot subdivision, 3.5 plus minus acre site located at Jeffrey Lane. Assesses parcel ID 40-12 plus 13, 32 plus 33, in a residential A zoning district. The applicant is Jeffrey Bosworth, Southern New England Real Estate Development, Inc., 45 Noelwood Drive, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Is the petitioner available? So Mr. Bosworth, we see your name.
Hold in, I'm just trying to figure out how to get his number in. So if Ryan can give us a hand.
Mr. Bosworth, can you hear me? Mr. Bosworth, can you hear me? Mr. Bosworth? Mr. Bosworth. Mr. Bosworth.
Yes, I'm. Yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, okay, thank you. So this is progress. So, um, we are on your item. So we would like to hear from you, your request.
Okay, basically hopefully you have the plans in front of you. This is simply a modification of the previously approved definitive subdivision plan. And it's, uh, just modifying, moving the infiltration system from lot three to the back of the cul-de-sac on lot two. Nothing else changes. You know, the lot lines don't change, the, the street doesn't change, nothing changes except the, the location of the infiltrator system. And the infiltrator system basically is the same. Um, the, uh, catch basin that's located in the cul-de-sac remains the same. Uh, it's just the, the water would be, the topographical flow of the water goes from the high point of Jeffrey Lane. Uh, it flows actually to the backside of the property. It flows from, uh, a height of 298 down to a low point of 284, which is a 14% drop or a 14 foot drop. Um, its location previously, uh, was actually, um, if you were in a straight line view, the water would actually have to be flowing uphill. So, uh, this basically puts the infiltrator more in a, in the, the flow of the topography of, of the, uh, of the area. And, uh, it doesn't affect the stormwater, um, calculations, nothing changes except for the location of the infiltrator, moving it from lot three to lot two. Uh, and it, it's in a better placement as far as the saleability of the lots. Um, it would basically be located in the front yard of whoever purchased lot three, uh, to which I already lost to sale because of its current location. But puts it more out of the way be, at the back of the cul-de-sac and doesn't really interfere with, with lot two. And DPW went along with the, uh, or concurred with the, with the change.
Thank you. Bethany, do you want to add anything? George, you want to add something, George?
Uh, no, Bethany had a comment about not getting a full submission, only getting the one sheet. Uh, and I'd like to know if she feels that that's, uh, significant enough to, uh, delay this until she gets everything that she would like to have on it.
I think it's really up to the board's discretion. Um, DW and I like to have the fully modified plan set to refer back to in the future if there's any questions about subdivision. Um, it just helps prevent any errors occurring.
I, I would suggest then that we, um, rather than extend this, that we, if we vote to approve it, we vote to approve it subject to, uh, receipt of a full set of plans for the record.
Could, could I make a comment to that, please?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Nothing is changing on, if you had the full set of plans in front of you. Um, the infiltrator shows up on sheet four, uh, with the, with the complete engineered layout. If you go to sheet five, it shows up there with a full layout again, but it has an engineered portion of the curvature of the roadway. Nothing has changed there except for the location of the infiltrator. If you go to the next drawing, it gives all the engineer specification of topical roadway cross-section, tree planting, um, vitaminous concrete berm, uh, silt fence, vitaminous concrete paving, uh, inlet and sediment. Uh, none of this has anything to do with the alteration of the infiltrator. It does show up on this plan on page six. However, the whole point of the modified plan, it shows everything that was existing. And it just shows the relocation of the infiltrator. And if you go to page seven, it shows the construction of the infiltrator. And however, none of that changes. The whole point of the modified plan, it's just modifying the location. Doesn't change any of the, the lot lines, the structural, uh, component or anything. That's the whole point of the modified drawing. The only other thing that would change is a plan for the, the, the easement being moved from lot three to lot two, which that has been provided. Um, the other side of the coin is the original engineer who did these plans is now retired and wants nothing further to do with this. He gave permission for another engineer to do the modified section. Um, so I'm in a dilemma. The new engineer can't change the plans illegally without the former engineer's permission because they're here, his engineer drawings. I don't see the, the need to do a complete set of drawings when you have, everything stays exactly the same except for the, of the, uh, infiltrator, which you have a new plan for that positioning. Lot lines don't change, street lines don't change, water doesn't change, sewer doesn't change, gas doesn't change, electrical doesn't change. Uh, manhole construction, uh, catch basins, nothing else changes. It's just the location of the infiltrator and that construction doesn't change. It's simply a location change.
If I might, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My experience is that after five years, when you've got two sets of plans.
George, we cannot hear you. We lost your, we lost your audio. Mr. Kingston, we lost your audio.
Just able to mention the existing, the existing copies of the, the, you know, print out a new set of plans with those inserted into them. The fact that we have one engineer stamp on certain pages and a different engineer stamp on the other pages, I don't think makes a big difference. What is important is that we have one set of definitive plans so that when DPW goes out there, five years from now, seven years from now, whenever it gets completed. Um, and we know that subdivisions can sometimes take a lot longer than the developer desires to get completed. Uh, they've got one set of plans to deal with and aren't trying to guess which sheet goes with which. That's my, my personal opinion.
Russ?
Yes, sir. Mr. Punderson.
As a former member of the planning board and chairman of the planning board, it has been my experience not to approve a plan that is not the final definitive plan that is, as the way it's going to exist and be built. I understand the change, but we have to have a, a plan, a set of full plan showing where the location is. That's been my past experience before we, before we vote for it.
Basically as, as built.
Yeah.
Well, the as, after it's built.
Right, I, I understand, but, but, but we need a plan so that in the future, someone can get out there and know what they're doing.
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying. We, that's why we need the plan.
And I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, good.
If, if, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
All you're going to do is add this sheet to the existing plan. And everything else it's changed, stays the same. Nothing changes except the location of the infiltrator and it's clearly shown. And if this is, is attached to the original set of plans, you have a complete set of plans.
That's for you to do and to submit to us, not for us to stick it into the existing plan.
So, so, um, do I have a motion on, do I have a motion on this item?
Well, I, I guess the question is if, um, do we want to continue this until we get the plans and want to prove it contingent on reception, reception of the plans?
I would be willing to accept it on conditional, the condition, the plans are complete before anything's done.
I'll make a motion to approve the change to the plan, subject to receipt of a full set of plans, uh, with the final design.
With the modification.
Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion made to approve the modification subdivision plan conditioned upon receipt of a final set of documents.
Actually, did we close public hearing?
You're correct. So, um, if there's no.
Close.
So a motion made to public hearing, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, to close the public hearing, any discussion? Hearing none, to close the public hearing, Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Kingston.
Yes.
Mr. Punderson.
Yes.
Mr. Torsia.
Yeah.
And I'm a yes, Russell Denver. So we do have a motion to, to approve the modification of the definitive subdivision plan to be effective upon receipt of a final set of plans showing the modification. Is that correct, George?
That's correct.
Okay. And it has been seconded by Mr. by Mr. Punderson. Any discussion, any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Mr. Richards.
Yes.
Mr. Kingston. Mr. Kingston. Mr. Punderson.
Yes.
Mr. Torsia.
Yeah.
I am a yes. Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
So that item.
My screen freezes up now and then.
Yeah, it does. So that item passes. So the next item of business is the director's report. So I'm going to ask Bethany to, uh, to come on and please give your director's report, Bethany.
All right, give me just one second.
Sure.
Um, I think I'd like to start with an update on the mixed use village district zoning bylaw because we have, um, John in the audience who can help us with that update. At the July 14th Town Council meeting, Greg Thompson, who's the school committee chair, expressed concern on behalf of the school committee for the planning board and requested an impact study regarding 330 Chestnut Street project. Um, I asked John if this was already a work in, in progress and he confirmed that. John, do you have anything more to say?
Uh, hi, everybody. First of all, hi, everybody. Thank you for, uh, for having me. I, I promise I really have an office. I've done my last three meetings with the town from my car. Uh, but I truly have an office. So, uh, but thank you. Um, and Bethany, thank you for reaching out. Uh, I was not aware of, of the July 14th request, um, that Mr. Thompson made. Uh, I'd had previous conversations with the superintendent, um, on the matter. And we were just coordinating how we're going to exchange information with, with our professionals. Uh, he just wanted to make sure that, that everything was quote unquote anonymous. He wasn't, uh, disclosing any information. Uh, that, that would be any privacy concerns for the board and we, we assured him that, that, that we would not be. Um, so yes, the, uh, we have our impact study in the works. Uh, I expect it's, it's probably going to be finished sometime next month. Um, as the board may know, um, the execution of a, of a host community agreement is moving up in the process. It seems that, that the council will now like that, uh, almost as a condition of the zoning as opposed to a condition of the, uh, planning board's approval. Um, so in place fairly quickly. So in order, in order to be able to do that, we just needed to understand what those impacts are going to be. So we can put the parameters in, in place to make sure that we can, uh, address them satisfactorily for the town. Um, and for the board's edification, we expect that that's going to be, uh, something to do with the water system. We expect there's going to be an improvement to the pump station that is immediately adjacent to our site. Um, that there will be some sort of improvement there and we'll work with DPW as to when that exactly gets implemented. Whether it's at unit one, at unit hundred, at unit 200, unit 300, whatever the case may be. Um, and I think some of that might do with, uh, you know, whether it's the taller buildings versus the lower buildings, uh, as well. Um, and then secondly, the big concern was, was with the school impacts, uh, and what, and what that would be. Um, the biggest change there obviously is, is the imposition of affordable units into the plan. Uh, they typically have a higher school child, uh, generation than would a market unit. Um, so we're going to have to factor that in and come up with a number that, uh, we all agree is, is reasonable in terms of what our quote unquote normally expected impact would be and then, and what mitigation would be for that. And then what would any mitigation be for, uh, what we would call an extraordinary impact? You know, two or three times the number of children show up that we would expect. Um, so that, they're the, the two big items that I think are going to be there. I think traffic, uh, will be pretty straightforward and probably limited to frontage improvements. Potentially something at, at Shaker and Chestnut. But, um, we're not really, we don't really think so, but we'll, we'll see. Uh, I think the, the intersection to the west is, is actually in pretty good shape based on what was done there with the, um, with the community impact agreement that was done at that intersection. Uh, so I think we're in good shape there. Um, but there'll be the, the main three things will be potentially some traffic, uh, almost definitely something on the water. And then whatever we come to agreements on, on school, whether that be normal impact and then what any extraordinary, uh, measure would be. So we're going to get that, get that, you know, finished up, I would say in the next four to six weeks. And be ready to be back, uh, with the council either, you know, right upon adoption of the ordinance, hopefully in early September. Or, uh, or maybe right before the public hearing, i- if that public hearing does carry into September, which uh, my expectation is it will, but, uh, maybe we get lucky and it'll get done in August, but, uh, we'll see. Uh, Bethany, I don't know if they talked about schedule at all.
Um, I checked with the clerk, uh, yesterday to see if they had scheduled a meet or they had scheduled uh, this, the next town council meeting and she hasn't gone back to me yet with an answer. So I will definitely.
Hey, well, we lost your audio, Bethany.
But you broke up it definitely. So, so for the board, and Bethany will correct me if I'm speaking out of turn. But my expectation is that they will introduce the ordinance, uh, soon, hopefully at their first meeting in August. Uh, and then refer it to the planning board for your review, uh, relative to what you had forwarded over to them. Uh, hopefully for a finding of consistency or substantial consistency, uh, term is. Uh, and then referred back for a public hearing for the council.
For the council.
And then George, Mr. Kingston, you'll have to tell us, I think your, your review and referral is also a public meeting on the, on behalf of the planning board.
I believe it's a public hearing, I believe.
Yeah. So, so there'll be a little coordination, some, some public hearings to be held. There was some discussion about a joint meeting. Um, that may occur, may not. I, I think it can probably occur with all of you holding your individual meetings, particularly as you've all been meeting pretty diligently by Zoom. Um, you know, but I, I expect that there'll be a back and forth process during the month of August. And, uh, you know, my hope is that, you know, very early in the month of September, there'll be a final public hearing a, and then a vote, uh, for adoption. Uh, as the board knows and was watching, I think there were, uh, on the order of about 10 or 12. planning matter subcommittee meetings, uh, very, very detailed review, uh, review by outside counsel. So some, some very, uh, extensive review and, and discussion on many, many matters. So, uh, everybody did a very nice job and I know, uh, tied, try, and chimed in. I think Jonathan, you attended a meeting. I, I, I think I, board members except for Mr. Punderson attended a meeting at one point or another and, and I greatly appreciate all of your, your input and thoughts on this, on the matter.
Thank you.
And I'm glad, I'm glad you pulled over to talk to us. George, do you have any questions?
Russ, he's driving right now. Stop it.
No, 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 no. I, I pulled over. I'm stopped.
Pulled over. George, you got a question?
Now, I just, yeah, my question is, does this mean that the town council subcommittee has finally finalized their language?
Yes, duh.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
They, they worked, they worked very hard. They were very diligent, very thorough and very thoughtful, I, I really. Um, I, I'm very appreciative. We all are.
If there's no other questions, thank you very much, John. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll, I hope to see you.
Well, hold on, Jonathan, did you have a question?
No, just a quick comment, uh, to the, of planning subcommittee. That was a great job done. Uh, you know, I think this impact study would be something of importance. The utilities, uh, and, and obviously the traffic are of top of mind in terms of the education. Considering some of the language on the limit on affordable housing and the, considering that there is going to be potentially declining enrollment according to their own numbers, uh, I'm not sure how much of an impact that there would actually be. But it'd be worth, worthwhile to take a look at, um, but considering the layout that is right now, I a substantial increase in students, if not maybe a handful of students.
Yeah, that, that's a very good point, Jonathan. That was one of the things that, that we worked with the superintendent on is, is to understand where, where they are on, on enrollment at incoming classes. You know, fortunately, unfortunately, this, uh, this new generation is not, uh, not, not reproducing like the last one did.
That's right.
So, so there's, there's a dramatic drop in, in the number of children, uh, particularly in districts like East Long Meadow and, and like the one I live in, uh, in New Jersey. You know, for example, my son is in the high school. He's in a class of seven hundred and, uh, our incoming kindergarten class is three hundred and ten. So, um, and that has been that way for four years in a row now. So dramatically shrinking.
We just got a graduating of two thirty. And, uh, the kindergarten is well below, I think, two hundred. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, but there is a substantially lower number in the lower grades.
Correct. That, that's exactly what the superintendent was, was explaining. And, and as we said, we just want to make sure our numbers line up with his, um, so we can, we can forecast accurately. And, you know, we don't want to have any, any, you know, dispute or, or, or about, um, you know, where we stand and where we think we're going. And then we'll be able to layer in our students, uh, as they come. But, um, we, we look forward to doing it and the superintendent could not have been more helpful and, uh, and we look forward to, to the results.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a safe drive.
Thanks. We'll see you soon.
Thank you. Bethany?
All right, I moved about as far a router as I can get so hopefully, uh, the wifi sticks around. All right, so I just wanted to give an update on the MVP action grant for, um, the master plan update. We're hoping to hear back from, in sometime in August. So that'll be a big project, um, if we are approved the grant money. Um, I'm also working in collaboration with DPW, um, on a grant for shared streets and spaces from Mastot. We are putting that together with the help from Tool Design. They are an engineering firm and they are one of three firms that have been identified by Mastot and are reimbursable under the grant.
Okay. What, what's our agenda look like for August fourth?
We have one new subdivision. It's a two lot subdivision. They are also going before the conservation commission tomorrow night, so that may be, they may have another conservation meeting after the fourth. And we also have a handful of site plan waivers.
Okay. Does any, anyone have any questions for Bethany?
I do have one more, um, update.
Okay.
I spoke with Ken Comia. Um, if you remember, he came to a planning board meeting in March before COVID happened. Um, we are trying to pick up the housing chapter update that he was working on initially under the DLT. Contract. He now has only about six months, um, to get the finished product to the planning board for review and approval. And what we are planning to do is develop a housing chapter oversight committee or a working group of three to four individuals who Ken can, um, have as his main contact for the next six months to work on that housing chapter. I'm wanting any suggestions that you may have as to individuals I should reach out to, um, who should be on that group.
I think definitely the housing director.
Yep.
You mean the housing authority?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you think Diane Bishop would, uh, would be a good addition?
Absolutely.
From the assessors? And I'm also thinking a, um, you know, a realtor in town.
Okay.
Would be, uh, good. I think, um, we could all probably send you a name or two of people that do a lot of, uh, realty work in town, to be helpful as well.
Would anyone from the planning board want to be part of that group?
Don't all stick your hands at once.
And I'm a realtor also.
And I'm a developer.
Does that mean you both just volunteered?
Pete actually spoke up first.
Sounds like it.
Listen, between working on my son's house, between working on my son's house like I was tonight and all the stuff I've been doing, I don't have any more time.
But we'll, we'll find someone for you, Bethany.
Okay. Um, and I'll just do my best to keep everyone updated on that process. And we're trying to get the community involved as much as possible, so we'll be doing a community survey and, um, everything like that. So I'll keep updated as those come out.
Great. Anything else?
I think that's the major stuff. We covered it.
Good. So, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Boy, I thought you were all going to want to stay on for a while.
I was kind of wondering that myself.
So we need to do a roll call. So Mr. Torsia? To adjourn?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Yes.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Good night, everybody. Thank you for your help. Appreciate it.
Good night, Russ.
Bye bye.
Thanks.